Property LLC v Town of Tiverton, no action was taken. On Town Administrator, number four, potential litigation, no action was taken. And the council did decide to put two and three at the end of the agenda. Approval of consent agenda. Approve of regular council meeting minutes of June 13, 2016. No executive session held. Received minutes from the filing boards of commissions, which are none apparently. Correspondence received and filed. Prevention Coalition, June 2016 newsletter. YMCA request for support. Approval of tax assessors abatements. Town Administrator, Police and Fire Department overtime. Proposed Tiverton Home Rule Charter amendments received eight. I do believe we've received another one too Nancy. Have we received more amendments?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
The home charter. Are there a total of eight or are there more?
Can I receive another one?
There'll be one for next week, Madam President.
Okay.
I'll discuss it later on.
Okay.
We have the advertising for tomorrow, so.
All right.
You'll have it for tomorrow.
Forwarding to July 25th, Town Council, where a public hearing will be held for a charter. Counsel Perry, amendment regarding amount of signatures needed for alternative budget. Counselor Perry, regarding limiting changes to Budget Committee's recommendation for operating budget to no more or less than $200,000. Town Solicitor, section 1010, remove a waste water management commission. Town Administrator, section 1007, personnel board amendment for advertising requirements. Justin Katz, regarding balancing on major appropriations regarding local voter approval prior to implementing new or increased fees or other revenue source projected to cost residents $20,000 or more than cost in prior year. Jeff Carr and Nancy Drex, requiring Budget Committee to obtain approval of at least four-fifths of its membership before recommending any tax levy increase greater than 2% more than prior year. Matt O'Dell, regarding holding executive sessions and end-of-council meetings. Peter Moniz, regarding providing specific line items to be increased, decreased, or created on a petition in this budget proposal. Seven, Town Administrator memorandum regarding concession stands and food safety. Town Administrator, distribution of department monthly reports for June 2016. Does any council like to pull anything off the consent agenda?
Madam President, I'd like to pull off CA five.
Anyone else? I intend to take a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor. CA five, Town Administrator, Police and Fire Department overtime reports.
Madam President and fellow councils, fellow councilmen and women. I usually do this every time it comes across us. Looking at the police, and I actually did speak to Chief Blakely earlier this afternoon, looking at the total police overtime of 28,249. In there is a grant for 9,242, and he explained that to me as that will be a payback to the town. So it costs us overtime, but it will be coming back to the town eventually. The reason for all this overtime, of course, is, you know, we all know what's been happening in the town with the hostage situation and the shootings up at the Pecassett Cemetery, and then another car fire with a person in it last week. So it's costing us quite a bit in overtime for the police department. On the flip side, I'd like to commend the Fire Department. If you look at that one, it's $682.24.
Which is the lowest we've ever seen it.
I've never seen one that low, and I'd just like to commend the chief and the men also who work our fire stations. Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve CA five.
So moved.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor. Public hearing. Advertising for hearing, Tiverton Land Trust, public hearing for sound variance, special event outdoor entertainment for the event Country Day at Pot and Gray to take place on Saturday, September 17, 2016, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Hello.
Good evening. I'm Wayne Barning, representing the Tiverton Land Trust here tonight. We've got a great program planned again this year. I believe this is our 15th consecutive year that we've run Pot and Gray Day, and it's probably become the most highly attended activity around town. We estimate we had about 1,500 people there last year. Every year we say we're going to try to be a little bit better. It's going to be hard to beat last year, but we're going to make that same statement again and make this a fun day for everybody around town on the 17th.
Any questions from the council?
It's going to have the track to pull.
Absolutely. I'll be there.
This is a public hearing, so is there any comment from the public? Any comment from the public? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Tiverton Land Trust for a solid variant special event outdoor entertainment for the event Country Day at Pot and Gray to take place on Saturday, September 17, 2016, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Stay right there. I'd like to entertain a motion, please, to bring C one forward.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor. C one, Tiverton Land Trust, special event outdoor entertainment license for event Country Day at Pot and Gray to take place on Saturday, September 17, 2016, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Any further comment from the council? It's the same as last year, the same music. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to Tiverton Land Trust, special event outdoor entertainment license for the event Country Day at Pot and Gray to take place on Saturday, September 17, 2016, from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? I'm looking forward to it, thank you.
Thank you, hope to see everybody there. Thanks again.
Public hearing advertised, public hearing, Town Administrator, public hearing continued from June 27. Approval of proposed amendments to fees and fines, including building inspection fees. Matt.
Madam President, I have a suggestion to make. Mr. Hall was unable to be with us tonight, but he's done some research. He's pulled together building permit fees from several other towns, including Tiverton. I'd like to distribute that to you now, briefly go over it, and then I would ask you to continue this to the 25th so that Neil can testify as to the details of what is in this handout. I have exactly seven.
The 25th is going to be a really cumbersome meeting, so could we do it to the first meeting in August?
It's fine with me.
Because I'm starting to have nightmares about the next meeting because it's going to be so long.
They'll be the same, give me one at a time.
Pack it, one at a time.
Okay. So be good. Okay, and I think that would be best because our next meeting we have a big public hearing.
So what you have are some very complicated schedules. Or they at least look complicated. They're from Portsmouth, Middletown, and Newport, comparing to Tiverton. What Mr. Hall wanted to emphasize to the council is that the primary area of difference is the surcharge levied by the Town of Tiverton is 4%. The other three towns' surcharge is 3%. The recollection is that the Town of Tiverton specifically took a vote sometime before Neil was hired to increase that fee with a look towards what was coming in the future, in terms of development of the town, and to raise additional revenue because they were going to be that much busier in that office. It was a legitimate tie-in from the fee to the amount of work that was going to be put through the office. One reason to proceed with caution and to, you know, first of all, take these milestones as a marker is to where your flexibility would be, and most of the momentum here would be to reduce that surcharge since it would be seen as out of whack with other towns, if you want to look at it that way. One reason to move with caution is some other communities are just starting to catch up, and they're just not as busy as Tiverton is. They're not under the same development pressure as you are. And the other thing is, the state of Rhode Island has been maneuvering for the better part of a couple of years now to establish mandatory fees. Building fees would be the same from one community to the other, or they would be working off one single formula for towns versus cities, et cetera. So whatever you put in place is likely to be changed by the state within the next year anyway. So with that having been said, I do not administer these fees or these inspections all day, every day, like Neil does. I would prefer to have him speak to you from a point of expertise rather than me guessing.
Okay, so I need a motion to continue the hearing till August night.
So moved.
Second, I have a comment. Matt, is it possible that Neil could put together a quick and dirty comparative? I think the easiest way to do it is build a house, a house that's the same in every community, just to see what the actual net result of these fees is.
And I will add to that a, let's call it a 15,000 square foot commercial building.
Oh, that's a good idea.
So I have a motion on the floor, and a second to continue till August 9th, all those in favor. Thank you. Appointments and resignations, David Sarret, 45 South Avenue, Planning Board resignation. Peter W. Core, 1148 Main Road, Planning Board resignation. Do I have a motion to accept these two gentlemen's resignation with regret and thank you for their years of service on the Planning Board?
Make that formal motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion?
Just a comment to say that both Dave Sarret and Peter Core were extraordinarily qualified and competent individuals serving on the Planning Board, both from being in the building trades and construction management, and they will be sorely missed, and I thank them very much for their service.
Motion's been made.
Just say I agree with that. That was 100% correct.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Appointments, Melissa Hutchinson, 203 Hooper Street, Planning Board, new request. Is Melissa here? I saw her before. Yeah, there she is. Welcome, Melissa. If you could just tell us a little bit about you, because the audience doesn't have in front of them what we have, and why you would like to be on the Planning Board.
Sure. My name is Melissa Hutchinson. I'm a local architect. I run a small practice in North Tiverton. I'm also a professor of architecture at Roger Williams University. I've lived in Tiverton for 11 years, gotten more involved with the community in the last three or four years. I've been on the Tiverton EDC for the last two years and recently appointed as the cheerwoman, and I feel that I might have a greater impact on the Planning Board with my expertise in architecture. I used to work at Newport Collaborative Architects for 14 years in Newport, so even though I do mostly small residential projects locally, I do have a background in bigger development projects from my previous experience working in Newport. So I hope the council will consider adding me to the Planning Board.
You were also a big part of the...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I was on the Grinnell's Improvement Ad Hoc Committee.
And did a lot of the architecture for us.
Did all of it.
All of it. All right, you did all of it. Any questions for Melissa?
I did have one question, and I felt an obligation to ask it because I asked this question a couple of times before. You put in quotation marks, well, let me start off. I'm looking forward to being more involved in community planning, and then you put in quotation marks, "smart growth." What do you mean by smart growth?
My definition of that specifically. I feel like the town can't necessarily stand still, and that at some level, we're going to have additional growth in the town. And so my thought is that instead of acting in a reactionary manner, that we have a good system in place that tells people and developers what we want to see in the town, so that we are allowing for growth to happen, but in a way that is healthy and encouraging people, you know, telling people what we want to see rather than what we don't want to see.
Any further discussion? Because we have two openings, and Melissa's the only applicant, I believe, if it's okay with everybody, we could appoint her tonight.
What is it, a two-year term?
Oh, yeah, it doesn't say the term.
Yeah, we don't have a term.
You know why? Because this has been advertised, and the deadline isn't until July 19.
So we should wait?
It's not going to be, I thought the interviews might be tonight, and you'd be able to appoint on the 25th.
So even the appointments we shouldn't do, are we...
Well, they've all been advertised, and it's, the deadline for anyone else who might come forward is until July 19.
But there's a space open, right?
There are two resignations tonight from the Planning Board.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Two resignations, two, close to open.
I just have...
So what she's saying, if more than one person comes forward, then we'd have more applicants for these two positions? Potentially. Brett?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we've mentioned the Stonebridge Ad Hoc Committee, I'm sorry, the Grinnell's Beach Ad Hoc Committee. There's so many of them, such a small geography. And I worked with Melissa on that committee, and I just wanted to pass along that my impression of her is very good. She is extraordinarily diligent, turning around drawings very quickly, never really missing anything, took extraordinarily good notes, and she proved to be very competent, and I wholeheartedly support her for this position. I think she'd be a great addition to the Planning Board. And I don't think we currently have an architect. We had an architect on the Planning Board for a while, but I don't believe we do have one now. I think that would be an asset to the town.
Thank you, Pat.
Madam President, I just want to add that I served on the same commission, and I join with Brett. You'll have my support.
Councilman Shalick, did you want to...
Yes, I just have a question. Have you reviewed the comprehensive community plan?
I did read it when I joined the EDC, but I have to admit, that was probably a year and a half, or two years ago, so I should refresh and read it again.
And we have a new one that's been presented to the state planning. Are you familiar with the land use ordinances?
I am.
And the subdivision regulations?
I should probably review those before coming on board.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I got confused. Nancy, how many openings do we have at this point? Only two, okay.
Currently, we have at least two, and they're not senior project.
Okay. Technically, four, but two of them are reappointments.
No, so we shouldn't even appoint the reappointments tonight because the advertisements... Okay.
Well, I would make the motion that we appoint Melissa Hutchinson to 203 Hooper Street to the Planning Board for a new request. I don't know what the term is, but I'm sure it's easy to figure out.
Can we do that if advertisements is still going on? That's the only thing I'm asking, because I have no objection, but...
I'd save this course, just to wait the next week, the next two weeks. I'm sorry, I understand you're well qualified, but we still have an opening period.
So do I have a second to Brett's motion?
I'll second that.
I mean, my argument is we have an extra seat, so.
Yeah, I'd prefer to follow the advice of council.
That's fine.
To avoid any problems at all. Is that okay, Dave?
Second, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so motions...
I'll withdraw the motion.
Thank you.
And we'll put it on the 25th.
Patricia Cody, 67, Wapinac Lane, Planning Board Reappointment.
Hi, Pat. Hi.
Just tell us why you want to be back on the Planning Board?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just give us a brief explanation why you would like to be reappointed.
Yes, I've been on the Planning Board for the last nine years, since 2007, and as I mentioned on my application there, I certainly have learned a lot about, and of course, I've lived in the town since 1976, so seen a lot of changes in the Town of Tiverton over those years. And I think it's important that we keep in mind the vision that we have for the town as a whole, and then plan the development, you know, not that we have the final say on all of this, we just recommend to you, and you do the final, make the final votes on it, but I think, you know, keeping in mind the rules, the regulations, the vision in the comprehensive plan for the town, and trying to stay with that as much as possible so that we can control the development of the town in such a way that it will be certainly acceptable and attractive, and, you know, everybody will want to live here the way we do. I think we're very fortunate.
Any questions for Pat?
I do have one, and because you're a reappointment, you've been through the situation. Do you think at times the Planning Board goes a little bit too far?
The town what?
That the Planning Board goes a little too far in what they recommend to people coming in?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Well, I'll give you, for instance, a gentleman came in for the medical center up the road, and you were present for that, and they tried to talk him into a two-star building instead of a single building. You think they were going too far with recommending what they recommended?
Well, it's a recommendation, it's not a demand. So, you know, we may think that perhaps that would be more efficient, and that would be better for the town, because I think we need to try to establish some kind of balance between bringing in entities that will help the taxpayers and at the same time, help the businesses, and that's not always an easy balance to maintain. And as I say, it's a recommendation, we don't have the power to...
They're all recommendations, but I mean, when these people are sitting in front of you, they almost take it like it's not a recommendation, that it's required.
Well, maybe that's something we need to rethink and discuss, and...
Because we almost lost that facility.
Okay, that was a while ago.
About two or three months ago.
Oh, two or three months, yeah. I was thinking originally when they came in.
Yeah, probably originally, but...
Yeah. Well, as I say, it's something certainly that we could discuss.
I mean, I sit there, and we're telling people how high they can grow their flowers, and what colors they can paint their buildings. I just think we go a little bit too far.
Well, you might be right. Certainly, again, you want to keep a balance between, you know, you don't want to make it so difficult that they don't want to be here.
Right.
But on the other hand, you certainly want to make it as attractive.
Correct.
And as appealing, you know, as we can do it, so.
I thank you.
Again, maybe you can get on the agenda, and we can talk these things over.
I'll try.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you very much, you do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the input.
Any questions for Pat? Comments? All right, so we'll also be appointing for the reappointments at the next meeting, is that correct?
I'll ask Jay's question, I'm sorry. Jay, you're not going to ask about development?
Actually, I've gone to some of the meetings, and I hope I'm not being presumptuous, but I think I have an understanding of what your viewpoint is, and I think it's a rather moderate viewpoint, and one I would have no problem really supporting.
We try.
Yeah.
You know, and try to take all things into consideration, and...
Well, you're the voice of moderation, as far as I'm concerned, on that, with that group, so I'm perfectly happy to support you, and I have no questions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Pat. We'll be appointing people at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stu Hardy, 51 Summerfield Lane, Planning Board Reappointment, new request.
Yes, Stu Hardy, 51 Summerfield Lane.
Just tell us briefly why you would like to be reappointed to the Planning Board?
I've been on the Planning Board for six years, and I've been chair of the Planning Board for about one year now, and I thought long and hard about it and decided that I would like to be reappointed for the sake of continuity. We've got a major development proposal before us, which is very complex, and we also have a comprehensive community plan update, which is now before statewide planning for their preliminary and initial comments. It will certainly come back to the Town of Tiverton, will certainly come back to the Planning Board and to the Town Council. But these projects require a lot of work and a lot of institutional memory, which we lack right now because of the departure of Kate Michaud. And so to the extent that I can help with continuity and institutional memory and help navigate the Planning Board through these two very complex processes, I think it would be a good use of my time and an effort to stay on for at least one more term. After that, I'll have to reevaluate where we are.
Any questions for Stu?
Yeah, I'll have the same question. Stu, you've been on for six years, and I've seen you in action. Do you feel sometimes Planning Board goes a little too far in what they recommend?
I think that we don't go far enough. I think that with respect to those parts of town that are highly visible, particularly those parts of town that were subject to rezoning about a year and a half ago, when the CECL group came in and helped the Planning Board come up with what we call a hybrid form-based zone, or a combination of a form-based zone code and a conventional Euclidean code, so that we would provide both more flexibility for developers in the northern part of Main Road, from Souza up to the Fall River border, and also in the Bliss Four Corners area. You recall when we did that. We did that to introduce a new concept into development in Tiverton, which we thought would spur development, not retard development, but would actually encourage people to come in, based on smart growth principles, telling people what we want rather than telling people retroactively what we don't want. But part of that whole system were design standards, which were developed for us by the CECL group, and which are not regulatory, they're not heavy-handed, but they are guidelines. And so we try to encourage people who are doing development up there in that part of Main Road and Bliss Four Corners to take a look at those design standards. They're actually published, they actually have a lot of pictures, a lot of what we like, what we don't like, and work with us to come up with something that will make the town more attractive. Because by making this town more attractive, we encourage more business here. People don't want to go into an ugly area, they want to come into a very pleasant area, and Stone Bridge is a great example. We've made great strides in improving Stone Bridge, and I think we're going to get a lot more business in Stone Bridge because of that. So in many respects, I think we need to add more to our subdivision regulations in order to encourage more development, but the kind of development that we really want to see in the Town of Tiverton, I think it's a win-win for everybody. I know everybody doesn't agree with me, but that's my view, and Dave, you've been in enough of our meetings to know that, and I certainly appreciate your interest in our meetings.
Any other questions or comments on the council?
Just wanted to follow up, Stu. Do you think that the Planning Board needs additional resource or published material that developers can reference so that they, you know, without going into a very prescriptive design standard for specific buildings and specific uses and specific zones... zones, are there, are there resources that the town, the planning board can put into place that give people a better understanding of what they're looking for, so we reduce the trips back and forth on presentation?
We, we are, we are working with, with our legal counsel to come up with some new strategies that other communities have adopted, that work for everybody's benefit, the developers and the town. And so, we're, we have an ongoing discussion about that, and, and so, we want this to be a win-win, and not an adversarial situation.
Yeah, I mean, because theoretically, I suppose if the comprehensive community plan is the sort of high level, then you get a little more granular...
A little more specific.
The more clarity you can derive in that exercise helps everybody out, I think.
Right.
Makes, makes, you know, the developers more prepared to meet with the planning board, makes you folks happier that they're in the right wheelhouse.
Correct.
Be ready.
I'd like, I'd just like to piggyback on that, because I do attend quite a few of the meetings. And from what I see is, you have a lot of these developers who come before you, who have incompletive plans, or plans that don't have specific breakoffs, or where certain things are that you're looking for. And I don't think that that should happen. They should be coming before you, and maybe a checklist of some kind is what they need, but they're kind of wasting your time, or your, your whole planning board's time, by coming before you, and then, you know, you just have to reschedule another meeting until they get all their information, and then come, come back before you again.
It's, it's not necessarily their fault, part of the fault is on our side, because we're not giving them the guidelines and, and the specific direction that they need. So, again, this, this could be a win-win, if we can work this out, something that's good for the developer and good for the town of Tiverton. We, we are, we are looking very long and hard at our subdivision regulations, at our checklists, and as you know from a meeting or two ago, we, we have been looking at our fees and fee schedule and fee policies, to make those much more clear and much more transparent, so that developers know what they're going to have to pay in advance, and it's not a surprise. We'd like to do the same thing with the engineering. And, and Diderupeva is helping us in that respect, and some of the members of our planning board, Susan Gill in particular, who was here tonight, has been very helpful in that respect as well. So, we, we are working on that. But I, 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 I don't think the blame is all on, on the part of the developer. I think a lot of the blame is on the part of the town of Tiverton for not giving them what they need.
Right.
And then they come before us, and we say, "Well, you didn't give us what we need."
Right.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion or questions? Thank you, Stu. Bruce H. Cox, thirty-five Sunset View Drive, Harbor Commission reappointment. I don't believe Bruce is here. Is this also Nancy still being advertised? Okay. Melinda Foley Masello, thirty-nine ninety-one Main Road, Harbor Commission reappointment request. Is Melinda here?
She's at the Harbor Commission meeting.
Okay. And I would, I would imagine Peter Carr is too.
Yes.
Peter W. Carr, five hundred Eagleville Road, Harbor Commission reappointment request.
I just want to make one notation on Mr. Carr. He presently is the representative from the planning board to the Harbor Commission, but he could be appointed as a regular member of the Harbor Commission.
Is there an opening? There's a further opening?
He could be that.
Okay.
But the purpose of putting him on was just so you get through the interviews. Next meeting's going to be busy, and you can just appoint.
So, there are no other candidates, correct, on these?
No, because we're still advertising.
Oh, we're still advertising.
Nancy did this to expedite next week, so we've already done the interviews. And if there's anyone further?
What, what are the terms of all of these? Are they already expired, or are we...
July fifteenth, but they...
Okay. Until we appoint them.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I'll just say, I know there's not a motion on the table, but all three of those candidates, I don't go to every Harbor Commission meeting, obviously, because they meet sometimes when the town council meets, but I do try to attend, and I talk to those guys frequently enough. And they're all very diligent and hardworking, and I've said this before, the Harbor Commission are a group of eminently qualified people, they really are. And I wholeheartedly support all three of them.
Thank you. Unfinished business, town administrator, trash collection options, user fees. Now...
Madam President, at the last town council meeting, the council directed the administrator, the treasurer, the solicitor to review the user fee system established by the town of Middletown, as an example, and to provide the council with additional background research into what it would take to implement a similar system here in Tiverton. At that same meeting, Councilor Souza brought up the option of using bag fees as a way to raise the revenue. And while the council did not direct my efforts to include a review of that proposal, I did for the sake of, of argument, because I thought some very important policy issues were going on.
Can I interrupt here, because I found that very odd, considering the council, Tony told us that we could not do this, because those fees are put in a special fund for the landfill closure. Is that still true?
Correct, correct. Section sixty-six dash fifty of your code states that one hundred percent of the pay-as-you-throw fee, less administrative expenses, goes into the restricted account on landfill closure funds. I think Matt included that, just so you could put that section in, that it's not, this is what your ordinance says, a hundred percent has to go into the landfill closure fund.
Unless we change the ordinance?
Well, that's my question, is it possible to change the ordinance? I, I was just curious on why this was here. Unless we could change the ordinance?
Well, he doesn't, he doesn't need to answer for my activity.
Yeah.
I did it because I, I thought it would be an important way to tease out some of the policy considerations that would be involved in using one financing mechanism instead of the other. As you will note from my conclusion, I do recommend the implementation of a flat fee, but it was not a conclusion easily reached. There were positives and negatives associated with both approaches. The important thing for any, just my personal opinion, I try to keep my opinion out of things, but on institutional matters, I'll offer them. The town council is a legislative body of the town. If you don't like a rule, you can change it. You have policy, I mean, you have a process you need to follow to change an ordinance, and the pay-as-you-throw program has a specific pathway for change, which is basically a sixty-day burn at a minimum. Having said all of that, where there's a will, there's a way, and if the legislative body were to decide to go a different direction, it could. So, what I did, I spent the vast majority of my time analyzing the Middletown proposal with some considerable assistance from the town treasurer, as well as officials in Middletown. Middletown created an enterprise fund, and there are two streams of revenue that go into the enterprise fund in Middletown. There is a pay-as-you-throw bag charge, and there is also a fee, an annual fee, that is enforced through a sticker program. So, the town of Middletown purchased bins under a grant program, and if you participate in the trash collection program, you send in your fee, you are mailed back, or you can pick up a sticker, you affix the sticker to your bin. And when Republic comes through, they use the one-armed bandit, they recognize that you have paid your fee, they grab your bins, and they dump them into the trucks. Middletown went out to bid for that contract, it's a joint trash collection contract with the city of Newport, so they got a little bit of a break on them, because they had more volume. The pay-as-you-throw system in Middletown is used to finance the replacement cycle for the bins. So, as their useful life is expired, there's money in the fund from the pay-as-you-throw program to buy new bins for people. That's the Middletown system. And you'll notice that because they have an arrangement with a nursery company to accept their yard waste, they collect yard waste twenty-two weeks a year. So, it's a really, it's considerably more service in the town of Tiverton, but the town of Middletown does pay twenty-five dollars a ton to tip at Rhode Island nurseries. Now, Middletown has far fewer customers than Tiverton does, and they don't have their own landfill. So, those customers in Middletown are paying not only for the collection service, they are also paying the tipping fee. Because all of this got very pricey for people, they recycle like crazy in Middletown, one of the highest recycling rates in the state, so high that Resource Recovery and Johnson gave them a break. So, instead of thirty-two dollars a ton to tip, it's twenty-nine dollars a ton to tip for the town of Middletown. But they ended up with a, a fee of about a hundred and forty-one dollars per household. You do the same thing in Tiverton with your approximately six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven customers. And that number wasn't just pulled out of the air, I worked with Dave Robert on that, we went, you've probably seen an old estimate from Director Berucci that was closer to six thousand, sixty-one hundred, right in between there, but that was over six and a half, seven years old. And so, we went back, and we reviewed everything, all the multifamily units, the duplexes, country view, all the rest of it, and that's the, that's the estimate that I came up with for customers.
What was it again?
Six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven customers. If you had to finance the entire trash collection line, which is six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, it would be just about a flat fee of ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents per customer. But if you only wanted to make up the difference this year from the budget committee's cut, so five hundred thousand, it would be seventy-five dollars a customer. That is assuming that one hundred percent of all those customers participate in the program. And that's an important number when you consider any other options, because a fee is a one-time thing. We would administer this, in talking to the tax collector, this first time through, as a one-time fee, try to collect it all upfront, and be able to make good on your contractual obligations with the last year of the contract for the hauler. But in future years, you could organize this to be mailed at the same time as the tax bill and billed quarterly. You could do that. But right now, in order to just get the thing up and running, and to assure the contractor that they're going to get paid for the services they provide, you should collect it upfront. If you look at administering the program, the difficulty is bins. And as you drive around town, Monday, it happens to be my most common approach route to work, is the Monday trash route, going up and down East Road, and then up Main Road to Highland. Many, many people in this town do not use a trash bin, they just put the purple bag on the side. It's a good thing, because it assures compliance with pay-as-you-throw. The guys can see, clearly you've used your purple bag, the bag goes in the truck, and you're done. It may also be a function of the fact that guys are pretty rough on the bins. And so, if you've bought a standard-issue garbage pail at Home Depot or Lowe's or wherever, and it gets thrown a few times and shattered, you're, you're out forty, fifty, sixty bucks every time they do that to you. So, it's not worth it, I think, to a lot of people. So, about the only bin I saw consistently used at every single customer stop was the blue recycling bin, which, by the way, is too small.
The new ones are good?
No, the new ones are fine, in turn, the vast majority of people are using the old ones. We only sold, we only sold a few hundred of the, we sold out everything we bought, but we only had, you know, it's a small fraction of the sixty-six hundred people.
So, people would have to go and buy a trash can and put the sticker on it?
Yeah.
But then if the trash can gets destroyed, there's only one, could they get a replacement sticker?
Those are all the administrative details we have to figure out. Now, the good news is the stickers...
As I was reading this, I was thinking of that.
Right. The stickers that we use for the beaches cost us just about thirty-nine cents, a little bit less than thirty-nine cents apiece to print. And that's for a very small quantity, only a thousand, so it's going to be substantially cheaper than that to print six or seven thousand of them. It's just not a major expense. I didn't identify any administrative expense or time demand on town hall staff that would prevent the implementation of this program fairly quickly. We have the tax rolls, we have addresses, we have a postage vendor. You know, every year, Director Berucci would send out the mailing with the calendar on it. So, we have a, a good sense of what it would cost us to implement the mailings, the communication.
So, if only fifty percent of the town uses it, and we just want to make up the difference of the five hundred thousand, I'd imagine it costs a hundred and fifty dollars if fifty percent, you're going to double that.
I think you're about right. It would be about a hundred and forty-three.
All right.
If you look at my math, I didn't go all the way to fifty percent, Madam President, I went to sixty.
Yeah, I know.
It was a hundred and twenty-five dollars at sixty percent participation.
So, it would be, it would be the same trash company, the same roof, the same trash pickup. All, everything would be the same if a hundred percent, then it would just be seventy-five dollars, which I don't want to charge anything, but we have, obviously have no choice at this point.
That's to make up the five hundred thousand.
That's to make up the five hundred. And what, as I was reading this, I was thinking, why don't we do it that way? Because if we do perform diligently this year, we do find savings in other avenues that we've spoken about, maybe next year, there'd be no reason for this. So, let's see what happens. If, you know what I mean, like, do this, then we have to do the five hundred. And then next year, we'll, we'll reevaluate it, depending on where we are next year.
You'll also be going out to bid for a new trash collection contract.
Madam President, only one addition I would make to that. Looking at your plan, Matt, I tried to come up with my own plan, which is consistent with yours, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't, everybody would be familiar with. And yes, you'd have the bags, we would continue with the bags, all of the money from the bags continues to go into the landfill, a landfill account...
I'm speaking to your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay. The only other question I, I had, and this is why I'm, I'm adding my comments, if you, if you have a sticker, the sticker means you're entitled to have your recyclables picked up, and you're entitled to have your bags picked up, which is what we have today. My guesstimate, and it's really a guesstimate, a wild guess, was that with the numbers that you had of something like sixty-six hundred customers, we would perhaps, and I, my assumption was, we'd have five thousand customers. It might be six thousand, it might be sixty, I don't know what the number is going to be, at a hundred dollars a customer. But with a clear indication, I think, if we send out a bill, that, look, we may have underestimated what your contribution has to be. If it, if we were talking about fifty percent instead of three-quarters percent or whatever, we're going to have to increase that fee. And then my, my final suggestion was that, assuming we have any excess money coming from, from the sticker fee, that would then go into the landfill account. And then next year, we would make the appropriate accommodation and get the number right. I'm assuming whatever number we get this year in terms of customers will be essentially what we'll get next year in terms of customers.
But Middletown, they annually adjust the...
So, it happened that they, they ran short...
We'd instantly be guessing at this point, yeah.
Wouldn't we find out how many people are interested before we set a fee?
No, I mean, I don't know if you have that luxury. We're not going to do a poll, we're going to send out the bills, but they're just...
I'm not thinking of a poll, but, okay.
Matt, I, I, just, I want to, Madam President, if I could respond to Counselor Lambert's. It was a factual question, so I'll try to give you a factual answer. The first two years of implementation, Middletown ran short, so their fee was too small. So, they actually had to transfer from the operating budget into the enterprise fund to make it liquid, and then they adjusted over time. What has happened this year is they're getting better participation than they had last year, so the fee actually went down.
So, that's why I'm suggesting the one hundred dollars, rather than the lower number, seventy-five or seventy, or whatever it is, because we have no idea what the experience will be this year. I would prefer to have a few bucks left over that we can then put into the landfill account, or use as part of our adjustment for next year.
That's what I'm hoping.
But I'd rather have too much money than not enough money with the, with the budget we have this year that we have to work with.
So, Madam President, if I could respond, I, all good points, Counselor Lambert. If you're asking me for, these are policy choices. If you came up over it, I suppose, you could allocate it as you choose. My personal recommendation would be to give residents a credit on the following year's fee, so that you just, you're...
I like that idea.
Well, I think what we'd be doing is making a judgment call. If we discover that we've gone, gee, we overcharged everybody by eighty-five cents, it may not be worth the effort. If we discover that we've gone, gee, we overcharged everybody by eighty-five cents, it may not be worth the effort. If we discover we've overcharged everybody by fifteen or twenty dollars, then I think most voters would say, yeah, it's worth the effort, I'd like to get credit next year.
Presumably it stays in the same fund, and so you carry, oh, you would just roll it over into the next year. And you could either, I suppose theoretically, you could either give them an actual credit or just reduce the, reduce the fee to meet the number of, that it actually costs. My question is of sort of accounting mechanics. What is an enterprise fund as it relates to the municipal budget and revenue side of things? And how is it structured? Where, where is it in and out of? You said, you know, we would have to transfer, or they had to transfer from general operating to make the, the enterprise fund solvent. Is that something we have the, the luxury of doing in Tiverton? And I'm sort of trying to, I am unfamiliar with enterprise funds.
Right, you get a lot of questions here. I did note the presence, presence of the treasurer, but she makes her way to the microphone. An enterprise fund is supposed to be a self-funding entity with the ability to carry forward balances to meet its operating needs in the future. As an accounting device, it's, it's a number. It's a due-to, due-from account that wouldn't be terribly different from any other similar arrangement that we have had with wastewater, perhaps, in the past.
Yes, exactly. If you were though to make a transfer from the general fund, it would be as an appropriation. So it would be something that was budgeted. So it would potentially be a planned contribution. Middletown contributed the first couple of years from their general fund to the enterprise fund. I think it was like less than twenty thousand dollars.
But they had, they had the luxury of time to do that.
Right.
So as far, sort of just a quick summary, an enterprise fund, it's voluntary, it's a one-way street unless we make it, make a resolution or we put an appropriation in the budget for the following year. And it is to pay for one discrete task.
It will, it goes into the fund. If there's anything excess left over, it typically stays in the fund to cover other expenses, perhaps mailing the stickers, that kind of thing. We did something very similar in the past, I know I've referred to it before, but we used to do an appropriation to the wastewater fund of twenty thousand dollars to help offset the onsite program. So we have that ability. But typically, your enterprise fund is self-sustaining and you, you develop a budget for it just as you do the general fund, albeit it's much smaller. In Middletown's case, they actually cover salaries and benefits of, it looks like a portion of a, of a position that may assist with administering the fund.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I, just a couple of follow-ups on some questions that were asked. If you look back at Middletown's, it does fluctuate year to year. I mean, two thousand and twelve was one fifty, fourteen was one fifty-six, fifteen was one forty-one. So it does depend on how many people are actually in the system. Now, the question I have for you, Matt, and I don't see it in any of this, and I read quite a bit of it, is, how many residents do they have in Middletown? How many households? Did you ever get that number?
I don't know. I'll go Google it.
Forty-one, seventy-two are participating right now. They've got to have more than we have, I would, I would think. Is it about the same population?
I don't know.
Your, your commercial profile is significantly different in Middletown.
Yes, absolutely.
And you will have more multi-unit housing than you have here.
I was just going to say that to do that calculation, you might want to take, you know, if, if they're running pretty close with what we're running, then obviously that number's going to be pretty close to what theirs is.
Yeah.
It's going to be a guess at the first year, but-
They're slightly larger.
Slightly lower?
Slightly larger. They have, it would appear fifteen, sixteen thousand, two hundred residents and a household count of hovering around seven thousand.
So it's pretty close to ours, then, right? We have what, Matt, sixty-seven?
Yeah, we're fifteen thousand, eight hundred and change and then sixty-seven hundred households.
Okay. All right.
So estimating the participation rate, yeah, to mirror theirs, correct.
But also, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, Middletown has, didn't have previously, they're not, they weren't going from a model of trash pickup to this system. They were going to a model, from a model of transfer station to this model. So likely there are, there were people who were getting Patriot or somebody else to come to their house like, you know, as a private vendor system.
Yeah, and it's, the only cautionary tone would be if they're at a hundred and forty-one and you're looking at what your participation rate would be at seventy-five or even a hundred, not to get too geeky on you, but there's a relative demand formula that tests people's sensitivity to price. And participation at a hundred and forty versus seventy or a hundred might be significantly different. The same consideration went into any conversation about bags. You really don't know what the participation would be or how people's behavior would change if you doubled or more than doubled the price of a bag to finance this program. From my past life, I'm familiar from the washing machine example, front loaders versus top loaders. And there was a good twenty to twenty-five percent shift in demand based on a doubling of the price of one product over the other. And it was a specific set of customer preferences informed those decisions. Would not be present for a commodity item like trash bags, but you're going to do better with a lower price than Middletown might be at its somewhat higher price.
And is there any way of looking to that nursery for our? Recycle, not recyclables, but for the yard pickup?
We have places right in this town that would take our yard waste if we allowed composting. But we don't allow it in our zoning without special needs, but men jumping through roofs.
Well, and or, I mean, the yard waste is an open question. We use it as cover. We would still need cover if we continue to accept refuse at the landfill. Yeah, personally, I'm not opposed to having a yard waste program that still continues to bring things to the landfill and process it there.
Bristol has their own, the town of Bristol has their own yard waste life, leaf and waste composting license.
It's a central location, it's convenient for people, and we run a tub grinder twice a year at an affordable expense.
Then it's free, Joe. Till the landfill closes, then we might look at the spot.
Okay.
I have one, one more question that just came up in my head. When you were talking about participation rates, did you consider the however many households that are on the free bag program, the low-income and elderly households? I think there are two hundred and fifty, two hundred and thirty? Between two hundred and thirty and two hundred and fifty?
No.
Okay. It's, it's a small percentage.
It's twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
What do you mean twenty thousand?
So you have to, I'll have to reallocate that twenty thousand across the remaining customer base after I take those two hundred and thirty out of the six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven. I don't think it's going to make a whole lot of difference in the fee.
Because if you get free bags, you'll get a free sticker, and that's very important to note.
Again, a policy decision for the council to make, if it makes sense, if you're not going to charge people for the two-dollar bag, you're not going to charge them for the fee.
We discussed that at the, at the last meeting. Anyone else? Counselor Shabbat, do you have a comment or questions?
We recommended that you do more research on option B and option E. Have you made any headway on option E?
Yes, I have. I consider finding alternative sources of savings to be job one every day, working in the town of Tiverton. The, last week, we've renegotiated, for instance, a telecommunication arrangement at the fire department. Instead of paying thirteen hundred dollars a month for the RTNA lines, we found we could switch to Cox and take that down and save five hundred bucks a month for the town. I'll continue to do that with every single vendor relationship we have and our labor contracts. The difficulty is we are now in this fiscal year and we need to come up with the cold, hard cash in a predictable manner. And I just don't know that I can get that done before the one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars still in the line item runs out and be able to come to you with five hundred thousand dollars worth of savings from the remainder of town government. I think the Budget Committee struggled with the same task and, and decided to go this route.
Yeah, I, and I just have comments on this because this is a fundamental change in trash pickup. You're basically going from a pool of money to pay for trash pickup to an individual basis. So when you pool your money, that means it's based upon the value of, of the house, they pay a tax. Commercial businesses contribute to this pool because they pay a tax. It's all taken into consideration and spread out amongst all the households. So it's a fundamental change. You're, you're changing it from a pool set up to an individual basis. So an individual has to pay X amount of dollars for their, their trash pickup. So that, that is a number-one fundamental policy change. And I'm not sure you can just like switch policy change one year and then switch it back the other way the next year. Makes life a lot, life a lot difficult. And when you think about it, the burden for this change is basically going to be on low-income households. Because it's going to be on the, the households that probably have lower-value housing. So even with this tax break that they supposedly got with this, this, this budget, they may only see, say, twenty or thirty dollars in savings on their tax bill. Whereas a, a house or a commercial business is going to realize a significantly higher tax savings. So for a higher-valued house, if they save three hundred dollars on their annual bill, then it makes no difference. Their saving, net savings is going to occur because they will pay less than three hundred dollars for their trash pickup and they will see a savings. But for the person who has a low income, low-value, low-value house under two hundred and fifty thousand, they're going to be footing the bill higher. So then they won't see a, a savings from the tax change. They'll, they'll see an actual increase and they're the people that are least able to afford it. So they're going to save, say, twenty or thirty dollars on their tax bill, but they're going to be paying sixty or seventy or eighty dollars to have their trash picked up. And they're the ones that probably have children. I think the, the households with, with individuals under eighteen, there's seventeen hundred and ninety-five, that's eighteen, say around eighteen hundred households with children. And then households with individuals sixty-five or older are, there's twenty-two, twenty-seven households. So twenty-two hundred households that have individuals that are over sixty-five. So I'm thinking of North Tiverton where you have low-income housing, and they're going to be footing the bill, a higher bill than other residences in town that have a higher value, over two hundred and fifty thousand dollar value on their house. And I, I think that's unfair to those, to those folks. I, I, I just can't, we have to come up with another way.
Madam President, I'd like to respond to that briefly. We knew this before the FTR vote. It should have been, it should be obvious to anybody that somebody who's paying twenty thousand dollars in taxes is helping to subsidize somebody who's paying three or four thousand dollars in taxes. We knew that, we know that now as a matter of common sense. We should have known it before the FTR. And as a matter of common sense, if people wanted to vote their wallet, we wouldn't be involved with a budget number two today. This is exactly what was predicted. It isn't as though it comes as a surprise to anybody. I've been, I've, at least in my case, I've been trying to tell this to people from day one, that we have come, we were accustomed in this town, and I guess in any type of community, that those who are doing well can subsidize those who may not be doing as well. What, what we've done is we've met the prediction. Somebody made the decision that instead of using the twenty thousand dollar home or the twenty-five thousand or the thirty thousand dollar home to help subsidize the three people who are making, paying taxes of three or four thousand dollars, instead of subsidizing, we made the decision that somehow we're going to push this back. We're going to make cuts and cuts that aren't going to equalize the payment for services. That, that's what we did, and I'm sorry to see that this happened, I really am. I, I, I agree with you totally, Joan, with your sympathy, but it's something we knew had to happen. Now we're talking about everybody paying a hundred dollars plus the bags. That means everybody is going to be paying the same amount for the trash pickup. I don't think that's fair. I think somebody who can afford to pay a twenty, for twenty thousand dollars in taxes or twenty-five thousand dollars in taxes might be able to afford a little bit more in their trash pickup, meaning a little bit more in their taxes. But this is what we're stuck with. And, you know, and I, Joan, just so, just so it's clear, I agree with you, I would, I sympathize. I, I think people got snuckered, and that's the bottom line.
And I, I also- Yeah, go ahead.
Again, I totally agree with Ms. Shabbat also on everything she just said. The problem is, too bad this wasn't conveyed to these people before they took that vote. Because again, it's just like Jay said, you know, after that vote was taken, this is what we have. This is what we have to do. And I live in the north end.
And I think we, we, also when we discussed it, the, the budget, and I think it was one of our, at least it was my recommendation, that the money should be taken out of capital, put into operating as much as we could so that we could, as we needed money, we would have money in the operation of the town rather than in capital. If we did need capital expenditures, we could fund, fund the money back towards, towards capital if, if we needed to. But this leaves us no option.
But I have a question with that. It wasn't, it wasn't us to make that decision. It was the Budget Committee that, that if they chose to take it out of capital and put it in the budget, they could have done it. But at this point, this is a certified budget, so we can't take from capital now or do anything. Because this is certified, this is the budget. So we can move numbers around, but not capital numbers, is that correct? And it wasn't, and, and I'm not saying the Budget Committee did a terrible job, I think they did a good job. And I wasn't one that wanted to take from capital because that's just kicking the can down the street again and roofs are going to leak and everyone's going to complain that we don't take care of new buildings. And I'll admit, I was one of those people. But if we can find five hundred thousand dollars in this budget, I'd be more than willing to discuss it. But I don't know where it's going to come from, and obviously the Budget Committee worked very hard and they tried not to do it. We could, I have Mr. Katz's cuts in front of me. I looked over them again today. There's some that just can't be done because of contractual. There's just some that are unrealistic, like taking care, getting rid of DPW overtime. When DPW overtime plows roads when it snows. So I looked at some of these and I did try to see if they would work. But five hundred thousand dollars is a very difficult task. And we saw the, the Budget Committee try to do it. I don't know what other alternatives, and that's why I suggested that we look at it year to year. And maybe next year with some of Matt's ideas on how to save money, maybe next year, we don't have to charge for trash if we could. We have a whole year to get creative. But at this point, I don't know if we could find five hundred thousand dollars, and we have to work quickly.
I still have questions, please. All right, you addressed the two hundred and thirty low incomes.
All right, you addressed the 230 low incomes. You're saying that it's going to be, the Enterprise Fund is going to pay the trash pickup for those 230 homes that are currently receiving free trash bags.
If we make it a policy.
If it's your policy.
So if the fee, I'm saying, if it's voted in, all right. So we're going to assume that maybe 1,500 to 2,000 people are not going to pay. I mean, we've got to assume at least that. They can't come up with the money or they just figure they'll take it to the dump themselves. So where in here is the plan to get these people through the landfill when we're open three days a week? I mean, we have 200 people up there on a Saturday and it's like a madhouse. And Dick Clark will attest to that, he goes up there all the time and calls me. So it's, you know, that's an issue. We're talking, so we're talking about probably keeping the landfill open six days a week, hiring people to staff it, that's all that's going to be added to the fee? Where's that money going to come from, for the extra help? Because we certainly can't do it with three days. So that, you know, I don't think this is thought out very well and that, you know, I know you want to defend the Budget Committee, but they did zero thinking on this issue, obviously. So because, you know, if they had thought about it, they would have had all the testimony before them in this. This is, the reason I brought, you know, I'm not really fit the extra cost on the bags either, but I just thought it would cut out some of the administrative cost as well. Because if 6,000 people have to come here or pick up a sticker or we've got to mail them out, somebody's got to stuff the envelopes, or we're going to use a private vendor, whatever, it's going to cost, that's also going to be added to the fee. I'm assuming that, we're assuming that all of these costs to implement the program will be added into the cost of the fee. And since as Joan brought up, we've narrowed, you know, it used to be that the commercial taxpayers were helping to offset the cost for the residential. We got a little benefit from having those businesses in town with their tax dollars because it offset. We've got to come up with a better way. This is, I don't know. I can't vote for, I can't vote for it. I just can't do it. I think I'd rather tell people just call somebody and have your trash picked up like a lot of residents do. Call yourself, have your own trash picked up, don't even get involved in this.
It's going to cost more than.
It may, but you know what? By the time the town gets done hiring new employees, when you figure pension and benefits and everything else, because we don't have the manpower at DPW, we're talking about hiring new employees to work at the landfill. And maybe a DTL cop on the Saturdays.
You're talking.
Well, I'm talking realistically. I'm sorry if you want to be in la-la land, but realistically, people are going to say, you know what, I'll take it there myself, I'm not going to pay anyone.
But you invented 2,000 households with no substance behind it whatsoever and you're basing your argument on that number. I have no evidence to indicate that that is the case.
Middletown, how many households are there? How many people use the trash program? And like you said.
How many people had trash pickup prior to three years ago?
But if the town pickup was cheaper, why didn't they switch?
Maybe they already had somebody.
It's not, and that's the problem. We haven't even, we haven't even addressed multifamilies. We have a lot of multifamily homes in town. What are they going to, they buy just one sticker and then three or four households are able to put their trash out there in one barrel?
I don't know if this is.
I haven't heard any mention of them.
But this is our job to decide these things. That's what we're here for.
Well, I think we're going in the wrong direction. It was just like she's talking about trash.
Well, you're expecting.
Stop overtime on snow plowing. Well, five years ago, I recommended that we do what Portsmouth does, we use private vendors. When we hit 40 hours, we send our guys home, we send out the private vendors. We're not paying time and a half to the town workers, it's extraordinary cost. I know because I worked for Portsmouth plowing the snow when all their guys went home and I stayed out all night. There are ideas that could be implemented.
Then, then.
That we never acted on. And now this was thrown in our lap by a Budget Committee who didn't want to do their job.
Because you do not like the reality of the situation does not mean you don't have to do the job. The buck stops with us. And what we cannot do, what you cannot do, is say, nobody's thought of all of these things, nobody's presented me with an answer. Your job is to come up with the answer. And so is mine, and so is Dave's and Peter's and Jay's and Joan's and Denise's.
I came up with an idea, I came up with an alternate budget called Budget Three.
And it didn't, but it didn't pass, Joe. You don't stop there. You don't check out.
I also went out and told people that we were probably going to lose trash collection, not because I have a crystal ball, because I heard it last year.
I know, Joe, but that was the past and we have to make this work. We have to make something work. We have to pay the bill when it comes due. So that is what this meeting is for. I don't think, I don't understand what this delusion is that somehow some solution is going to come out of the sky and it's not going to require any work from the town council. This is what we do. We make policy.
Matt.
We do, you don't, but we do.
We're making this mess.
Matt, did you think about the dump and whether it's going to need more hours to be open? Because I do see that there could be a problem there, but.
Right, well, no offense to anyone, but it's really not a very high level of analysis to figure out if more people go to the dump, you'll need more people there. What you cannot do, what I refuse to do, is speculate. How many people will participate versus not participate? And you're going to have to make adjustments as you go along. If participation rate is very low and we have a long line of people at the dump, you're going to have to accommodate that either with more staff, but at the end of the day, the faucet's only so big. Only going to be so many people will be able to go up to the top of the hill and turn around and dump and come back down. And so I don't know how much, how radically it's going to change the way Kim and Ray do business up there, I just don't think so. And there is no stump, step function to assign that value either. Even if you open another day, they're there anyway.
I mean theoretically, it may be our, it may be a natural market limit function because there's as many people that will say, you know what, on Saturday or on Friday, I've got the morning off, I'll go to the dump. There are plenty of people who are perfectly able-bodied and willing and whatever it is who are going to say, I'm not going to, I'm not going to drive all the way to the dump to throw my trash away, I'm just not going to do it. And plenty of people, plenty of people felt that way in Portsmouth, I mean in Middletown, and they had a much more serviceable center than we do.
I do.
Yeah, I was going to add, I don't know how, you're right, it would be speculation. I know, and it should never work out this way, I know I'm ahead of the game. I'll be happy to pay the $100, but that's, there's something wrong with a system like that. What I'd like to do though, I'd like to find out, and this may give us a rough idea as to who's going to participate in a program like this, let's say $100 a year for their sticker. Denise, I would think, should be able to figure out for us just on this issue that we're talking about. How many people are ahead of the game? How many have lost? My own rough estimate, and I, I don't like numbers at all, but I figured that if you were paying taxes in excess of $6,000, you probably made out. You're paying taxes under $6,000, you probably lost. That's going to be the bottom line. But I'd like to get some real figures and find out who the winners and losers have been.
Can you speak up, please?
And let us know just who the winners and losers have been, just on this one issue of the trash pickup. For some people, I know that this program is going to work out to be more expensive, but for a lot of people in this town, it's going to turn out to be far less expensive. I'd like to know where the cutoff is.
Madam President, I would respectfully refer the council to a presentation I gave in October. And you will recall, I showed you a chart that showed the distribution of the values of individual homes in the town of Tiverton. And I showed you, there's a very, very large proportion are $150,000 or less in value. You needn't boil the ocean to figure out how your tax base is structured in this town and where the burden falls every time you make a change, whether you're cutting a service or increasing taxes. It's very simple, very straightforward.
And that's what I was going to say too, no matter where we cut, we are affecting people. No matter where we cut, someone is going to get affected, if it's not the recreation programs, senior citizens, our own employees, somebody is going to, there's going to be a problem when you take $700,000 from a budget. You can't expect that some people aren't going to hurt from it.
I still had one question if I could, and that's how are we going to deal with, if I buy a sticker, put my can out and all my neighbors bring their trash over, how do you deal with that? I have a can with a sticker and there's 10 households dumping in my can. How do we deal with that?
Not only dumping it in his can, but the can's full, but they're putting other bags there. There's really no way to watch that.
I think it would depend on the refuge company to kind of honor that and say.
No, you just, I don't want to sound cavalier, but there are some things that you cannot lose sleep over. People cheat these programs all the time.
Well, I guess.
And that's, that would be cheating, but if all the bags that are in a bin with a valid sticker on it are pays you throw bags, the vendor will pick up the bags and take them to the landfill. And it's up to you as the individual homeowner to take your trash out and prevent people from piggybacking on.
I mean, I'm going to be encouraging it. What are you talking about? We're going to split the.
You can do what you want.
We're going to split the fee. Four apartments, we'll, you know, put in a few bucks.
So then next year, the fee will go up to accommodate the fact that you don't participate.
Well, that's just the point, that's the point. The fee's going to go up. It's never going to stop going up because next year, they're going to want to put the landfill employees into the enterprise sign. And then maybe the clerk at the DPW because she does some work and then, you know, everything else.
Speculations.
Speculation, no. See, and it's just like saying there's going to be a tax and next year it might go away. When has that ever happened?
In this state especially.
Well, the problem, I don't want to engage this too much, Madam President, but I can only sit by so much hyperbole. We just went through the example where Middletown actually reduced its fee from one year to the next. You'll also notice for the record that the city of Monseca had a trash fee and then took it away. Two years after bankruptcy. It took it away. Yeah, in Rhode Island. So all it requires is discipline and commitment to what you're doing rather than just letting it slide along for you.
Well, that's what I'm saying, this doesn't mean it's permanent. None of us ever wanted to do this and the Budget Committee doesn't want to do this. But if we are diligent, we try to do savings, there's no reason why next year when we do a budget, we may be able to work it out. No reason at all, because not one of us wants to do this.
I mean theoretically, you know, you at least reduce the, we're basing this on a barrel requiring a refuse bin. And theoretically, we wouldn't allow dumpsters. So there is a limit to the amount of garbage you would be able to logistically stuff into a bin, right? I mean, I'm just.
Every bin's going to have a sticker.
Right.
How many private roads do we have where everybody brings their trash to the end of the road? How are you going to know? How many private roads? What do we got, like 60 or 70 private roads where they bring the stuff to the end of the street? Every week you see the pile. How are you going to know who put the trash there? You know?
So what is your solution, Joe? Give me a solution. Find me $500,000 that we can do without getting sued.
I already gave a solution and it was poo-poo.
Some of your solutions were opening up contracts, we were paying people less than we, what we signed to pay them.
That's not what I'm talking about. Talking about structuring it so that it's.
The pay is your vote.
The funds are easily distributed and everybody pays a proportion to what they use. Not just a flat fee that's going to continue to grow.
Figure it out.
But I wouldn't even vote for that at this point, so I guess it doesn't really matter.
And we had such a heated argument and you wouldn't even vote for it.
No, because.
Do people want more time and we'll bring it back to the next meeting?
Yes.
Not the next meeting, it's the 25th.
I don't need more time.
Just be a vote. If everyone wants to go home, sleep on it, and then we can bring it to the next meeting.
So let me just ask you a question because you talked about it briefly. I didn't mean to cut you off, Denise, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If the mechanism were to double or to increase the bag fees and we were to rewrite the ordinance that said X amount of dollars, say it's $1 of the small and $2 of the large, all of that goes to the landfill closure account. It would keep the status quo as it is today. You could even adjust that if we wanted to go up. And increase the bag fees and put a carve-out that says any amount over X dollars per small bag and X dollars per large bag. I'm sorry, I hate to be a.
Oh.
It comes right back to the side. If you just move to the side, it's fine. We're looking at a larger increase than doubling, it would be four and change and two and change, right? But all of the other assumptions still remain. I don't know, I don't know. At least, it's still, it's still regressive. It's not quite as regressive as a flat fee. Because you would only be paying for the amount you used. But still, that is.
But Madam President, if I could respond to Council Pelletier. Sometimes you feel like you want to quote from your own memos. So I want to read what I wrote. A user fee implemented across a population on a flat-rate basis can be regressive. And, you know, personally, I'm violently opposed to regressive taxation. But it's not my personal opinion. I was asked to try to find a way to implement the plan. A bag system would be a pure user fee. You pay for what you use regardless of your income, it's simply your choice. And for those of us who live in communities where you take your own stuff to the dump, you shove every last inch of every bag because you don't want to make that trip any more than you have to. So my problem with it, as you get to the analysis at the end of my memo, is that if bags become so expensive, that now you're talking about, you know, five bags being 25 bucks or 30 bucks, people's behavior will change considerably. And so this council would have to set a policy for the allocation of funds in the pays-you-throw program to assure that you weren't shorting the landfill closure account. Now what's scary is, is if people's behavior changes enough and you have to pay that trash contractor a fixed fee, what will suffer will be the landfill closure account, the very account that we're short right now by any estimation of the actual final closure costs. So that was the reason for my recommendation.
It's better policy to have a fixed fee because you get the cash upfront and you don't have the risk of defaulting on a true.
It's $2 a week.
I know, I know.
Yeah, but you go to $4 a week.
I mean ideally, you would just, you would just put in a fee that was sort of pro-rata share of your tax, you know, the value of your house, you'd take the $600,000 you need, divide it by the value of the town, get a sub-tax, a sub-tax rate that you would apply to a single-family or multifamily house, and then you would, right, you know, but that's a nightmare.
Well, could you do that?
No, you would have to ensure, you would need total compliance, you'd have to back out all the commercial and industrial property to get a true rate of a user fee. And if you don't get everybody to participate, you're short. But that's just, that's just taxes.
A mill rate for tax collection, but then the program would have to be mandatory.
Right, because then you.
Because the mill rate would be focused on getting everybody to participate.
One person opts out and your calculation.
Because right now, we're talking less than $2 a week if we go $100. It's too.
I hesitate to point out, but the coffee I had tonight was $4.
No, but I'm just saying, I'm just putting it in perspective. It's something I don't want to, I don't want to charge anybody $2 a week for trash, but what is everyone's pleasure right now? Do you want, do you want to bring it to the next meeting for a vote? Or do you want to do it now?
Does anyone have any other questions or?
I just had one quick one. At, with the 100 and change at the left, what date are we predicting that you're going to run out of money for trash collection?
That's a good question. It's not going to be much more than two or three months. It's going to depend on the number of yard waste pickups and what we pay and the number of runs they make for large items, mattresses. It's not a big deal, but it's out of $145,000. It's not a big deal, but it's out of $145,000, it's a fair amount of money. But we're going to be, August will be cooked by October.
When is our next yard waste? It's August? No, I don't, I don't do that.
Neither do I.
We just had one.
We just had one. The monthly invoices, it's strange, I don't know when the pickups are, but I know what the monthly invoice is. When we do pick it up, it's $5,811.
Joe, do you have any other suggestion? Because I know that.
I'm out of suggestions.
No, I'm talking with Councilman Shabak.
Well, I think Joe has some valid points. You know, there are unintended consequences and there's no really good answer for multifamily bin sharing.
But there are a lot of communities that do this besides Middletown. I mean, Westport does it.
No.
Oh, no, Westport, they.
Bring it to the dump or hire.
Or they hire someone. You're right, I'm sorry. The friends I know hire someone, so.
So, you know, there will be landfill drop-offs, you know. It's hard to speculate, but if you're putting this program together, you have to put some type of estimate in there.
I'm sure Middletown had the same growing pains. They have three deckers, they have dead-end streets, they have same situations that we have in Tiverton. I mean, they're not. What's their solution?
The point was made earlier, Madam President, I'll address Council Perry's point. The point was made earlier, it's very important. Trash collection for the town of Middletown was an upgrade in the level of service being provided to residents. Instead of having to grab all your stuff and bring it to a transfer station and wait in line the way they do in Portsmouth, they now have this opportunity.
Right.
When you offer it to people that way, you get more subscriptions because you're offering somebody something they don't have. What the town of Tiverton is now engaging in is charging people an extra fee for something they've already had for many years. Just very different.
I understand that. My question is, they have three deckers, just like Mr. Souza says.
One bin per.
One bin per. And that's the way it is? One bin per?
One bin per apartment.
They're going to have to get a bin.
No, he's talking about the big roll bins, bigger than the ones we sell.
The difficulty sometimes is that all of these solid waste management programs are systems. They're all made to maximize the efficiency of the way they're organized. Middletown is different from us in that they have the one-armed bandit. So, you know, you're minimizing the amount of labor that's on the truck, so you're reducing the cost there. You're increasing the capital cost because you've got to go out and buy $700,000 worth of bins. Okay? But you phase it in over the years with the pays you throw system that they have. It all fits together. What we're doing in Tiverton is we're disassembling our existing system, which is actually very efficient, and trying to replace parts of it and trying to do so in a cost-effective way. It's going to take, no matter what we do, a year or two to figure out which end is up and get people used to it.
Now, if you have a household with a lot of children, now I'm going to start speculating, but I was just thinking of something. Some of those households have two trash bins. Because most people don't buy one of those huge ones. They have to get two stickers or as long as one trash bin has a sticker.
The flat fee is a reverse subsidy.
So you could have.
Everybody pays the same fee and you subsidize the heavy users. Yeah, you get two bins, but you get one, you pay for one sticker.
One sticker, I just want to make that clear because everyone keeps saying every bin has to have a sticker. Every house has to have a sticker.
Every bin will have a sticker, but you pay the fee once.
And that's why Joe's, that's why Joe's theory where there's 100 bags in his front lawn.
I got a sticker.
Everyone bring them to Joe's.
But I got a sticker. I'll be over.
And if you can fit them in that bag, in that, in that bin.
Well, it doesn't have to be in the bin, though. That's what you're just talking about.
I don't use a bin. I just put the bag on the ground and they pick it up. And that's pretty much most more people do. Unless we're talking about buying the bins and going that route. You can add that to the fee too, right?
All you'd have to do is go to Home Depot and buy a regular trash barrel and put a sticker on it. And then as long as your house has a sticker with a trash barrel, it's all right that you have some on the ground.
Can I get a 275? Is there a limit on the size of my barrel? I mean.
Who's got a sticker on it?
As long as it has a sticker on it and you.
Put my 275 gallon barrel out there and they'll take it. All right. That's my point.
I don't know.
Hannah, it's, it's.
All right, so.
It's a valid point. It's a valid point. Because on my street, not everybody has a bin. They put out the one bag of trash and they put it on top of their recycle bin.
Well, they'll have to buy a trash can.
So another added cost. So now it's going to cost $200.
I use a trash can, so I, because animals get on mine. I have to use a trash can. All right, so.
I'm ready to vote now.
Is everyone ready to vote or do they want two more weeks? It's up to you.
I mean, if it doesn't hurt to kick it for two more weeks or three more weeks so we can hammer out some of these with a little more granularity and talk about it again, that's fine with me. I don't care.
And Matt, some of the concerns that have been discussed, let's see if we can iron them out a little bit if it's possible. And we'll, we'll try. We may have to have an extra meeting soon. Because there's some topics that are going to take a long time. And as it is, we're out of here at midnight most nights, so. Okay, so we'll table this until, we'll do the next meeting, Nancy. I'm almost thinking we should put the charter complaints on a separate meeting, actually.
Charter changes?
Charter changes. I'm sorry, yeah. I'm so used to complaints. I'm so used to complaints. Oh, that's why we can't do it, we have the deadline.
It's got to be read time or whatever.
You're absolutely right.
It's just different language, it goes on.
Well, that's why I just opened it, that's why I said it out loud. All right, financial business, Town Treasurer Denise Sarat. Request authorization intention to a loan agreement with Bay Coast Bank for purpose of financing new rescue vehicle.
That was fast.
Excuse me.
Just give me a second here. I'm buried in trash. If you recall a while back, I had spoken to you about alternative financing options using Bay Coast Bank. And I have been speaking with the rep there. And he said that all they need is authorization from the council that would allow me to enter into a loan agreement with them. Right now, believe it or not, unfortunately, I was able to get a better rate at a leasing company, which was a little bit surprising because the initial rates they had quoted me were a little bit higher than I had hoped. But they came down. So I'm going to be doing the rescue vehicle with US Bank, which is someone that we already have a master lease agreement with. So it's just a matter of adding another schedule for this lease. However, I think it would be prudent to give the authorization to enter into a loan with Bay Coast because, so that kind of led me into talking about refinancing a couple of our older leases that are at higher rates. And they might be interested in doing that, so that would allow me to take advantage of that opportunity.
What rate did you get from US Bank?
1.762.
Wow.
But right now, we have two older leases that are up 2020 and 21 that are over 4%. One of them's like 4.7. And I can do 3% at Bay Coast. So I might be able to save us a little interest in that respect.
Very good.
What's the structure of this financing mechanism? Is it similar to what we talked about six or eight months ago?
Yes, with Bay Coast, yes.
What are the rates? You said 3%?
3%. The upside to that is we're still earning.
Is that net?
Excuse me?
Is that net of, well, they pull it out or? They pay us, we pay them. It's the net of three.
That's what we pay them.
What do they pay us?
It all depends on what we negotiate or whatever the savings or CD rates are at the time.
So it's going to be 25 basis points or so?
I'm doing 40 over there.
Okay. So it'll be two and a half, give or take. The actual cost of money will be 2.60, give or take.
And there's no fees or anything to.
What's the term look like?
Well, I would, I would do the same term as what we're, we're in right now unless I can shorten it and still spend the same. I haven't worked out all the numbers yet, but I don't want to go any longer.
Mm-hmm. Here's my concern. It was my concern, then it is still my concern. What happens if Bay Coast calls the note?
Why would they call the note? I'll just, for any.
Cash reserves, the Fed increases reserve rates, they have a big default and they need to cover reserves. I mean, 2008 happens again and they go insolvent. Any reason. The same reasons that they probably write a call provision into their loan agreements. It's because, who knows?
Who knows? Well, they would be securing our cash in a CD. So I guess they would take it, but I just really don't foresee that happening.
I know, but that's the point. But if that were to happen, what would happen? How would we fix that?
You'd run me out of town on a rail.
Not me personally, but other people.
It is something to consider.
Yeah.
I will follow through with that. I will ask him, what would, you know, the ramifications be if they called the note?
Excuse me, may I ask if I see their form for the financing agreement?
Sure.
Because I'm wondering what the events of default are. And I think it's just going to be what the agreement is. And to the extent that the events of default are all on the town's side, I think then there's a higher comfort level. If there are other events of default that the town has no control over, then I think it's something they need to take a good, hard look at. But if at all possible, I'd like to see the financing instruments.
Oh, you would.
I mean, if there are no call provisions, I say no problem, but I doubt that very much. If I were lending money, I certainly wouldn't. I mean, part of the virtue of providing such a low rate is you have immediate access to the money. You hold on to the cash.
Right.
It's secured by a note or a bond or a bill or a CD or whatever it is. But in the event of catastrophic calamity, they can immediately call it, cash out the CD and take their money and go home. And then we have just expended potentially five years' worth of debt service in one year.
Yes.
As long as we all, and I'm happy that you're going to give him that information.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I'm not concerned about the town defaulting.
Oh, I'm not either.
So we'll, we'll address that and I'll let you know.
I mean theoretically, the town couldn't default. They are holding the cash as collateral.
Right.
In a CD.
Right.
So, I mean, if we stopped making.
If we stopped making payments, they would just keep the cash. We already have the vehicle.
Yeah. And they'd say, nice doing business with you.
Right.
Try again next time.
Yep.
But I, but that event, as unlikely as it may seem, causes me great concern because if that is, if that does happen, like I said, if it happens on day one, which obviously that's unlikely, you have now just spent five years' worth of capital that was not approved by the FTR in one year.
Yes.
You've essentially paid for a vehicle cash.
You've paid for the whole thing, yes.
Right. So to the extent that we can mitigate or eliminate that risk, I would be very pleased.
Okay.
So should we hold off the vote until Tony looks at the documents and we have an answer to that question?
Yeah, I think you can do it one of two ways. Either delay and I'll give you a report at whatever meeting is appropriate.
That's fine.
Or you can approve subject to review.
Well, is there a rush on buying this vehicle? I know it's a demo.
He's going to buy it.
I'm doing the vehicle with US Bank. So.
You're going to do it anyway and then refi if we vote to refi.
No, no, I'm going with US Bank for the new vehicle.
Right, okay.
But I just, by Friday after the agenda went out and I got all of my rates, I thought, well, we'll get the authorization anyway in the event I can refinance or.
Higher.
Yes, the older ones.
Do they hold any of that debt?
No. Those are all with lease, they were existing leases.
So would anyone like to make a motion?
So it can wait.
Well, you could authorize it with review, correct? Is that what it was?
That's one of the actions.
You know what? I'll make the motion.
To authorize with.
To authorize it, authorize an issue to enter into a loan agreement with Bay Coast Bank for purpose of financing new rescue vehicle with further review.
But refinancing.
Refinancing, refinancing, I'm sorry.
It's not any of the fines.
With review, correct.
I'll second it.
So the review is going to be done by you?
Yes.
Okay.
No authorization to sign it until.
Correct.
This issue is prosecuted.
Right.
Will you review all of the lease documents before I sign them anyway?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Six one.
Thanks.
Town Administrator updating approval of amendments to police pension.
I'm recusing myself.
Madam President, this rather lengthy item is summarized in the one-page memo on the cover. Just so that anyone watching who doesn't have the same familiarity as we do, let me very briefly summarize the documents that create the relationship between the town of Tiverton and the police pension fund and the employees. There are two critical documents. One is the plan itself. The plan itself is an administrative document. It establishes the rights and responsibilities and the administrative procedures to be used by employees when they retire. It establishes their eligibility, how they'll be paid, how their service will be calculated. The other document is known as the trust agreement. The trust is essentially a document that establishes a relationship between the Tiverton Town Council and the police board, police pension board. It is the instructions provided by the town council to the police pension board for administering the plan as fiduciaries. It establishes our fiduciary duties and how we are to carry out fiduciary decisions. So before you this evening, both of those documents have proposed amendments. The plan amendments are summarized on seven items in this memo. We've now been through two police contracts without updating the plan. So that needs to be adjusted to reflect changes in terms in the police contracts. They need to be carried over to the plan agreement. On page nine, and again on pages 13 and 14, we update the definition of the normal retirement date. And as our attorney for the police pension board points out, this gets more and more complicated because as we go forward, we're establishing that 20 years of service that these individuals are, and how that normal retirement date is established. Page 15, and again on page 31. So that's item number two and item number seven in my list. For all intents and purposes, we are eliminating the interest paid to employees who leave the employment of the town of Tiverton before they vest. Up until this point, police officers were paid 5.5% rate of interest on their employee contributions to the plan if they leave before their retirement, before they're eligible to retire, before they're vested. We were paying that money out. So if we owed them 100. So if we owed them $100 in contributions, we owed them $105.50. The Union Act is one of the first tentative agreements we reached in the negotiations with the Brotherhood, was to take that out, because it actually hurts the fund. So now, if you retire, if you leave the employ of the Town of Tiverton before you're vested, you get what you put in with no interest. Page 15, which is item number three on my list, adds language regarding honorable service. When pension reform was done in Rhode Island as a general matter, honorable service requirements were put into the statute at the state level for all municipal employee retirement system and state retirement system employees. There is a common law behind the scenes, the cases in Ray Almeida. It's in reference to a judge who was accused of taking bribes and had his pension docked as a result. On the advice of council, it's better to have this boilerplate language in place and to establish an honorable service requirement right in the document itself, rather than roll the dice and hope that the common law will come rescue you as a private pension plan. Item number four, which is on pages 15 and 16, is a contractual change, and it reflects the language regarding death benefits to be paid to spouses. Item number five, on page 17, there's some internal revenue code changes regarding qualified military service time that we really don't have an option, we have to make that fix. Same with item number six. The United States Supreme Court decision eliminates a number of references regarding survivor benefits. Now, all domestic partners are eligible to receive survivor benefits under the Supreme Court decision. So that, in summary, are the plan amendments that are requested. The trust amendment, trust instrument amendment, reflects the implementation of the honorable service requirement. If, and the fiduciaries discussed this at some length at the meeting, too many of us, as members of the Police Pension Board, are directly involved in the administration of the town. So we would at once be levying discipline and passing judgment on whether or not a pension should be awarded based on the honorable service requirement. It is, if not an obvious conflict, it certainly gives the appearance of a conflict of interest. And the union likewise would be ostensibly militating against those decisions, and would have a vote as fiduciary. So there was no way to disentangle the Police Pension Board from these decisions. So what we've done in the trust instrument, and it still needs further refinement, but it's necessary to take this first step, is if a pension is ever denied, the case would be referred to a panel of three retired jurors, either magistrates or judges of the state of Rhode Island, to review the plan document and administer that decision. The board would still be involved in an initial denial, but there would be a basis for conversation about whether or not that would stick. These are all changes that were unanimously recommended to the Town Council by the Police Pension Board in a 5-0 vote. So I request passage.
Any discussion from the council? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the updating of the amendments to the Police Pension and Trust Plan.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Six with one accusation. New Business Evelyn Wheeler, Rhode Island Advisory Commission on Historical Cemeteries, Request for Action on Tax Abatement for Property Owners with Historical Cemeteries on Their Property. Welcome, and thank you for waiting.
Thank you for having me. Did everyone, does everyone have the packet? Great. I'm here, can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm here to urge you to enact this ordinance that the state has set aside for you to do. It will help keep our historical cemeteries preserved. I'm not saying that a whole bunch of people will come forward, but I'm hoping that enough will. And there's, each town has cemetery commissions that are willing to help the tax assessor with taking pictures before and after. That taxation, I set up, I followed the Lincoln Town Ordinance for Stonewalls, and they've had good results from it. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions from the council?
Did he actually get an ordinance?
No. That's all we got, mate.
So we'd need an ordinance, is that correct, Tony?
I'm also working on a sample application that would help you if you decide to put it through.
So the motion would be to direct the solicitor to make an ordinance for this?
I can, yes. I just wanted to note that Nancy did get an email from David Robbery, who was unable to make it today. He has some concerns he'd like to discuss with the council. I think you can do that if you take a look at what ordinance I drafted. Probably going to be benefited.
Okay.
Okay. And we won't do that till the August, sometime in August. Go ahead, Brad.
I just had a quick question. Have you presented this to the, or discussed this with the Historic Cemeteries Commission in town?
Yes.
Okay. And did they have any comments or recommendations?
He's right there.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we're all for it.
Oh, great. And it seems like it's very similar to Stonewall.
It is. It seems, yes.
That was going to suggest, maybe we can try to get both of these ordinances on the same agenda, Stonewall and the...
The Stonewall ordinances drafted, including one with a tax feature to it, has been forwarded along to your Historic Preservation Committee, and Ms. Anderson said they were going to be taking it up at their next meeting.
I'm saying, as far as our action, though, maybe at the same time, we should try to look at both these at the same time, if we get to it before reelection.
It would be August. It would probably be August. Yeah. The first meeting's starting to get filled up, too, so we'll see about the second meeting. So I just would like to entertain a motion.
And that motion would be to have the solicitor draw up an ordinance?
Yep.
For the Commission on Historical Cemeteries, Request for Action on Tax Abatements for Property Owners with an historical cemetery on their property.
Question?
I need a second. Okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, just that said that the Town of Lincoln had an ordinance already in.
I drafted one for the Stonewalls up there, and there's a tax abatement. I'm not aware of the historic cemetery tax abatement, but I can, of course, I can check that.
Same before you drafted, and maybe we should, I'd like to just look at that one, see if it's...
No, she was following the...
Following the Stonewall.
The Stonewall.
Yeah, right. No, I just gleaned the information and kind of based it on the Stonewall.
Okay.
From Lincoln.
All right.
So I have a motion on the floor in a second. Any further discussion?
Just to ask that, you know, obviously, work with the town solicitor, forward any information you've got that could be helpful when we start talking about this.
Absolutely.
Great.
And if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Would you need me here in August?
Probably not.
We'll contact you.
Yeah, we'll contact you, and we'll discuss whether we need you here or not, but we'll make sure you know the date.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Rebecca, Alwell Prevention Coalition requests discussion and a possible vote for the Town of Tiverton to continue as a fiscal agent on Coalition Grant to be submitted August 2016. Hi, Rebecca.
Hi. Yes, thank you. My request to you is to give me permission to respond to an RFP that has been sent out by the Behavioral Health Developmental Disabilities in Hospitals. We have, the Tiverton Prevention Coalition has been receiving a RISAPA grant since 1987 with the Town of Tiverton as our fiscal agent. RISAPA is the Rhode Island Substance Abuse Prevention Act, which put a certain amount of dollars in each municipality for prevention. In recent years, Tiverton's been getting about $18,000, just a little over that. We have all, that's since 1987, since 2011, so over the last five years, we've also been getting the Marijuana and Other Drug Grant. That is approximately $65,000 per year, for each year of those five years, with the Town of Tiverton acting as the fiscal agent. So the way that the fiscal relationship works, the state BHDDH sends the money to the town treasurer. The town treasurer writes out our, we invoice them, and the checks, the invoices are paid through those state funds. The state funds for the five-year grant, the marijuana grant, will end on October 31 of this year, and RISAPA will end on December 31 of this year. So in effect, our two grants that the town has been our fiscal agent for will come to an end. This RFP that has just been released by BHDDH is sort of a replacement of those two previous grants. It's also a redesign. Whereas in the past, the state had given municipalities money, they've come up with a new redesign where they're focusing it on regionalization. So the region, of course, that Tiverton fits into is Newport County. Not every region that the state has designated is a county. Ours happens to be other places, it's just towns that are close to one another, but not necessarily a county. My request to you is for permission to submit, on behalf of the Tiverton Prevention Coalition, the Tiverton Prevention Coalition would be taking the lead role in the county. There are a couple of reasons for this. One is that the RFP, which I know went out to all of you, but after 15 years in the prevention field and achieving Certified Prevention Specialist Supervisor level, I'm finding it hard to digest myself. So if you have questions, I certainly understand. It's very difficult to ascertain what exactly they're looking for. I have met with the other coordinators from Newport County. We have had multiple conversations. Tiverton Prevention Coalition is the most likely coalition in the county to take responsibility for this grant for a couple of reasons. And one is that I've achieved that, it's called CPS, as Certified Prevention Specialist Supervisor. In the state of Rhode Island, there are only 10 of us with that. That's the highest level of certification. In Newport County, there are only two of us with that certification, and the other one is my colleague in Portsmouth, who is not interested in taking the lead role with his coalition. I am. I think it's a good thing for the Prevention Coalition, and I think it's a good thing for the county. I think that one question may be, you know, how does it benefit Tiverton? And I think that's a really hard, it benefits the county as a whole. Tiverton would be the host site, which I think would be an honor that may remain to be seen. So that, you know, I've had conversations with Denise Soret. It seems that our relationship in terms of past fiscal management, and I would let her speak for herself, but it seems to be going okay. She does have some questions about contract management that the RFP is sort of silent on. So we would have to take a look at that once it came. Would the contract show a different level of fiscal supervision than the past? I don't have an answer for that, but that is certainly a question that Denise and the council would have to look at prior to signing a contract with the state. And unfortunately, the RFP is silent on that issue.
Any questions for Rebecca?
I'd just like to compliment the job that she does. I am on a Prevention Coalition in Tiverton, and I attend most of their meetings. And I think we've made a lot of progress over this past year, and I'd like to see it continue. So I'm in favor of this request.
Any further discussion?
Rebecca, do you have to go before the other towns in Newport County to get approval as well?
I would feel most confident if we did. However, again, RFP is sort of silent on that. It does require that all of the coalitions within the county are in approval. So I have met Little Compton, Tiverton, which is me, Portsmouth, and Middletown. We have met, we met last Thursday, we're going to meet again this Thursday, to sort of come up with some detailed plans on how to get this unwieldy thing to work. Newport has two, admin, two Coalition staff people who are currently not under contract. So they're not particularly able to sit and meet with us. And Jamestown does not have an identified Coalition Coordinator. So we're, we're doing the best that we can to get everybody on the same page, but with two of our towns within the region sort of offline at the moment, that's a little bit of a challenge. Newport is in agreement that we have to do something. They're not interested in taking the lead. And in fact, they're not eligible to take the lead in the fact that they don't have a Certified Prevention Supervisor, whatever. Lost my train of thought there. And Jamestown doesn't have an identified person either. No one really wanted to arm wrestle me for the honor of doing this. There's no, the grant provides funding to hire a regional coordinator. That's part of the obligation that we would be under. It is a 1099, you know, subcontract person, the same as I am. It will probably not be me. It will probably be someone that I somewhat oversee as the representative of the fiscal agent, but it'll probably not be me. We'll probably be hiring someone else. So again, you know, I don't think anyone else is really vying for this. The only entities that can submit a proposal for this RFP is a unit of government, a 501(c)(3) organization, or a college or university. So those are the limitations to who can submit. And the RFP requires that anybody that submits get the support of the local, the municipal coalitions. No one, to this point in Newport County, has approached any of us to say, hey, we're, you know, we're a 501(c)(3), and we're going to submit a proposal. So, not that they couldn't, but the timeframe for submission is ticking along. It's August 5 at this time. We are trying various means to get an extension on that, because as you know, the summer agendas for town councils are packed. If we do feel the need to go before additional town councils, just to even bring them up to speed, the opportunity and the likelihood that we're going to get on a July agenda is almost nil. So we're asking the state for a little bit of additional time. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had, is there a match for the town?
Great question. No, there isn't. It is a, strictly a grant from the state, comes, it's actually federal dollars coming through the Prevention and Treatment Block Grant, and there is no match.
So if we hired the coordinator, prevention coordinator, that's not, basically not a town employee?
It's not, no, it's not a town employee, and all of the funding for that position is in the grant. It's a five-year grant. And so, you know, when the money goes away, the position goes away, the entire program goes away.
Any further questions?
I have a question. I'll just give you another reference of the work that they do do, is that the school department now has a five-year plan, which we never had for a while. And now we have one because of Rebecca's efforts, and the Coalition got together, and we've met quite a few times, and we came up with a five-year plan for the schools, which I think the town needs also. But the school's ahead of us.
Any further discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
The only comment I'll have is good luck, because this is a mess.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Kids in request for proposal, there are none. Open forum for announcements, there's only one from Sally Black's School Bond on November ballot, August deadline, I guess that says.
Yes, you know, we all voted on the School Bond, at least presented to the people, and I just wanted to make sure it goes on the ballot. And I know there's some kind of August deadline, because one year we missed it, we had to have a special election, I don't want that to happen again. The state has approved the whole thing, and the Senate, and the House of Representatives approved it, and now I don't know the process, but it has to go on the ballot. So I know there's an August deadline.
Tony, you want to stand the next step?
Well, that's from my earlier comments, deadline is August 10th to get the language from the Secretary of State, so...
You'll be doing the language?
I always take a little bit of it, even when it's a school.
Okay.
Things pertaining to schools.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, Madam President...
No, you'll be making the language, though, the school's not going to do it.
Why is that?
Right. Sally, Steve Robinson's not drawing up the language. No.
I've got the legislation, let me just move it.
Okay.
If I need anything, I'll call Steve.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I had a discussion with Tony, was it this afternoon, Tony, or yesterday?
Yes.
About this same matter, so...
Town Administrator announcements.
Madam President, very quickly, the Governor's Commission on Disabilities is holding forums all around the state the week of July 25th through 29th, for people to discuss whether their needs are being met, or to comment on program performance, et cetera. I've identified the two that are closest to Tiverton on Monday, July 25th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. with the Rogers Free Library Meeting Room, 525 Hope Street in Bristol. The next closest meeting would be Thursday, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Thursday, July 28th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Middletown Public Library Meeting Room. We have posted out front here all of the fora, but those are the two that are closest to Tiverton. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Solicitor, any announcements?
No.
Town Clerk, oh, I skipped over Town Counsel. Town Clerk, any announcements? Town Council, any announcements?
I do have one. I did go to the Rhode Island Department of Transportation 2016 Highway Safety Champion Award Ceremony on June 28th, where one of our officers, Officer John C. Le Duke, won an award for Occupant Protection Enforcement Award. I just wanted to mention that Officer Le Duke joined the Tiverton Police Force in 2013. He received the award for Occupant Protection Enforcement, 10-year veteran of the U.S. Marine Corps, obtaining a rank of Staff Sergeant. Officer Le Duke has an associate degree from Copper Mountain College, Joshua Tree, California, and a bachelor's degree from Providence College, and is currently working towards his master's degree at Boston University. He is a Certified Child Passenger Safety Seat Technician, and is a proactive, community-oriented police officer. I wish our congratulations to Officer John Le Duke.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got an announcement, and I just wanted to let the council know that the Stonebridge Abutment Committee has met twice. We're meeting on a weekly basis on Thursdays at Town Hall at 7:00. For anybody who's interested, we're meeting again this Thursday. We've made a lot of progress. This past Thursday, we met with VHB, and after Thursday's meeting, this coming Thursday, we'll have edits and final plans, and it is our intent to then on the 25th, make a recommendation to the council for action going forward. Actually, really not, I told Nancy that was non-negotiable, that that's beyond the agenda. I expect it to be very brief, but it is, to fit our very close timeline, I'd like very much to get the council's direction at that meeting, so we can get VHB to finalize plans and make submissions to the CRMC Ascent Permit Process.
Thank you.
Sure. And I just had one question, and I should have mentioned this in earlier. Matt, there is a reference in the Planner's Minute, the Planner's Report, that he's working with VHB and RI DOT to close out the Stonebridge Abutment Contract, and I want to make sure we're not, we're not working at odds with each other.
You're not.
Okay.
They've submitted some bills for reimbursement that Mark does not believe they delivered those services, so we're going back and forth with them over what's billed.
Councilman Perry, did you have something?
Yeah, I have just one also, it's on the Charter Amendment that I'll be proposing for next week, and it's on, it's actually right out of the Portsmouth Charter, pages eight and nine, and I'll read it to you, it's not that late. Upon the receipt of the consolidated town and school budget from the Town Administrator, the Town Council shall review the administrator's recommended budget, and within 30 days, adopt a provisional budget. The council may only, after the total amount of the school department budget, a copy of the provisional budget shall be filed with the Town Clerk. Two, immediately following the adoption of the provisional budget, it shall be published in a newspaper having general circulation in the town, showing the initial request total amount of each department by the Town Administrator and School Committee, and the recommended total of the Town Council. Within 30 days of the approved and publication of the provisional budget, public hearing shall take place. The council shall have printed and available copies of the provisional budget for public distribution at least five days prior to the public hearing. The time and place for holding of these hearings shall be included with the publication of the provisional budget. Upon completion of the public hearing on a provisional budget, take the results thereof upon consideration and make such additional changes as the council may deem appropriate. Within one month following the completion of the public hearings on a provisional budget, at a regular town council meeting in June, adopt the final town budget by charter, following one copy of the Town Clerk for public inspection, and as soon as possible have the final budget departmental totals amounts published in a newspaper having general circulation in the town. So what that does, ladies and gentlemen, eliminates the Budget Committee. And I think after looking over the last three years of what's happened to our Budget Committee in this town, it's something that's well overdue.
And that'll also be at the, that'll be at the hearing next week, in two weeks. And Tony, you're writing that up for Dave?
Yes.
That's what he just told me. Because we don't have that. And we have to advertise. Okay, we're going to go into executive session now. Items two and three. Councilman Lambert.
I move we go into closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, 4246 582, Ray litigation, Mark A. DeBello versus Town of Tiverton, in oral.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Councilman Souza?
Aye.
Councilman Perry?
Aye.
Councilman Mellow?
Aye.
Councilman Lambert?
Aye.
Councilman Schabert?
Aye.
Councilman Pelletier?
Yes.
And me, yes.
And staying closed, executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, 4246 5A1, Distribution of Performance Evaluation for Administrative Assistant, Mary Lou Sullivan.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Councilman Souza?
Aye.
Councilman Perry?
Aye.
Mellow?
Aye.
Councilman Lambert?
Aye.
Councilman Schabert?
Aye.
Councilman Lambert?
No.
And we are in executive session.